Evening and welcome to the May, I said that twice, May, October 23rd City Council meeting. And we are, I guess, waiting for one councillor to call in and we'll get him when we get him. We'll open this meeting with a public forum. Just a reminder to all of you, the public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues except for those items which have already been heard by hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene, residence, your ward if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. And we begin with representatives of a couple of commissions. They get to come to the head of the line. And so our first speaker is Ralph McDonald, followed by Art Farley.
I'm a resident of Betty Taylor's Ward Two. And I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Sustainability Commission of the city of Eugene. For about the last year, the Sustainability Commission has held a subcommittee, which I've chaired, on tiny houses and issues around tiny houses. And I'm very happy to report that after all those meetings, we've passed a resolution within the committee and then in the month of October, it was passed unanimously both within the committee and unanimously at the larger commission regarding tiny houses. And you've seen it at the work session today, so I'm not going to belabor it. I think I will read just the first paragraph, so that everyone present knows what it's about. But "In order to address Eugene's housing crisis in a manner consistent with envisioned Eugene in the climate recovery ordinance, as well as recently passed state laws, the Sustainability Commission requests, one, that the city council, acting through the city manager, direct the city planning department to review current land use code as well as development fees and requirements, and recommend specific improvements in regard to tiny and small home construction, including cluster villages and secondary dwelling units. Specific issues to explore might include minimum lot size, maximum lot coverage, setback in height restrictions, postal address policy, utility hookup and utility billing issues, emergency vehicle access requirements, owner occupancy requirements, and access to commons areas zoning. In addition, we recommend that tiny homes and sustainability principles be incorporated into discussion at your work session on missing middle housing." I'd like to thank my fellow commissioners, Zach Malholland, Sue Wolling, and Thomas Price, for meeting on this issue, as well as the tiny house community, Ananda Reeves, David Wade, Heather Johnson, Eliza Kusinski, for providing our committee with valuable input. In addition, I'd like to thank city employees, Alisa Hansen, Kristy Brown, Mark Whitmel, and Eric Brown in the planning department, and Ethan Nelson and Chelsea Clinton in the sustainability program of the city of Eugene for helping our committee. I also want to thank the council, because I know the council doesn't look at this in a vacuum. And recently, the council, I felt, did a great job protecting our own neighborhood. You know, we want to accommodate the housing crisis, but we also want to protect the historic character and livability and urban forest for the existing residents of Eugene. Again, thank you very much on behalf of the Sustainability Commission.
Thank you. Next is Art Farley, followed by Sophie Bybee.
My name's Art Farley. I'm 907 Wood Hill Drive in Eugene. And I'm here tonight also as a member of the Sustainability Commission. I'm here to address one of the other proposals, or the other proposal that you received in your packet today, that one regarding electric vehicle-ready homes. Specifically, what we would ask is the city work with the State of Oregon Building Codes Division to adopt a local rule change to the building code for Eugene that would require all new and significantly remodeled single-family and duplex homes to be made EV-ready. What that really means is that you'd be essentially putting something like you would put in a home for your dryer, except there'd be a 240-volt line out to the garage with a plug there. Wouldn't include putting in the charging station, anything like that. So essentially, we're looking at something that would cost about $120 or so for that work, which is significantly cheaper than doing it after the fact, when you have to rip things apart, bring people out to do the work. So that's kind of the idea. So why would we be proposing this change in addition to the building code? Well, as you know, the city has a climate recovery ordinance, and you set the goal of reducing community fossil fuel use by 50% by 2030. Well, since 90% of the energy provided to us by E-Web is green energy from renewable sources, the electric vehicle use would clearly be a significant or appropriate step for reducing the greenhouse footprint of Eugene. So while clearly not a major component of the automobile market yet, we see constant indications, especially in news reports lately, of all the car manufacturers going to offering more and more opportunities for plug-in hybrids or electric vehicles. And by 10 years, it's estimated those cars would probably be less than or comparable to gas vehicles. So this is kind of the future. This is clearly a future-ready perspective on homes, and you're adding value to the home by doing this. It's not a fee that a builder is having to pay or anything like that. It's a significant and appropriate change for us. Survey indicates that about 80% of charging of the vehicles occur at home, so this clearly would facilitate people having these vehicles. And so one way to approach this action, as we indicated, is that approach the state building code division to establish Eugene as a pilot project for this type of rule change. And that way, it could be in effect. We evaluate it after a year or two and see how it is working, what the feedback has been. And clearly, to do this, there would be a local process. You would have to have a hearing and things like that that would move this up to the building codes division. And essentially, 15 seconds. Whoa. So let me just say, I have some other things, but let's just say, I think this is an opportunity, again, for Eugene to lead the way and make a relatively small, but hopefully effective change in policy to reduce the greenhouse gas emissions for the city of Eugene. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Thank you. So we have, good, dial mic. Oh, that'd be great. Just so you know, since there's standing room only here, we have a total of 18 folks to speak today. And first up is Sophie Bybee, followed by John Thielking.
My name is Sophie, and I live in Emily Semple's Ward. I would like to start by thanking council and Mayor Viness for all the actions you have taken to lead Eugene in the fight against climate change, from the CRO to the no-oil train resolution, to Mayor Viness's pledge to join other world leaders in implementing the Paris Climate Agreement. And of course, thank you for voting to hold a work session on Eugene divestment from US Bank. Divestment is a way for Eugene to do its part to keep the price of oil extraction high and unprofitable and encourage a change to green technology. Divestment is what many indigenous groups are calling for as ways for communities and allied communities to stand for the right to water, culture, and life, and against the colonially styled business as usual. Eugene City Council unanimously passed a Stand With Standing Rock resolution. We cannot maintain this resolution and a business relationship with a bank that supports DAPL and other pipelines, or any other company that systematically subverts human rights. I would tell you that we are running out of time, except the release of carbon dioxide has risen our ocean temperatures and dried out our land. For many Puerto Ricans, Floridans, Texans, and Californians who lost loved ones and homes in this season's extreme weather conditions, we're not simply running out of time, we ran out. To prevent the effects of climate change, we would have had to act 50, if not 100, years ago. The option for preventative care is gone, and what we have left is triage. But triage can be life-saving. We can still significantly impact the quality of life for future generations. Every action we take now to fight not just climate change, but the culture of oil which perpetuates it, will be worth 10 actions in the future. Please schedule a divestment work session in a timely fashion, which I know, according to the logic of my testimony, would be 1917. But since November 2017 is the best we can do, let's do our best.
Thank you. John Thielking, followed by Alice Louise Warner, Esquire.
Okay, I'm John Thielking from Ward One. The last time I spoke before the city council, I gave out some ideas for how to solve the homelessness problem, that in large part did not involve government action. Tonight, I have some further developments to announce. I have created the brand-new website called CouchHosting.org, which is now linked to an app called FreeWorlder.com that is in beta development. And today, right now, handle sign us, become a guest slash Couch server or a Couch host. Many thanks to the Ambuuntu Eugene group for finding that app for use in their CASW economy scheme. Also, there is a page on CouchHosting.org website that tells people about three companies that operate in all 50 states. We'll co-sign a lease for you if you don't meet the traditional requirements of having a 600 FICO score, making three times the rent and income. Lease Lock, for instance, will cover a part of your damage deposit and write lease default insurance for you in place of being a cosigner if you make only two times the rent and have a 500 FICO score or better. Development of CouchHosting.org is supported by Land County Chapter of the Pacific Green Party, at which I am one of the co-chairs. The free exchange of goods and services promoted by the Free Worlder app, plus the lowering of the costs of providing housing enabled by companies like Lease Lock, may put downward pressure on rental market prices. Eugene needs to get serious about finding housing for the homeless, in the same way that the people in the North San Francisco Bay Area are getting serious about helping each other after the devastating wildfires that put thousands of people out of their homes. The only excuse for why a solution such as CouchHosting.org cannot get the majority of homeless people off the streets by this time next month, not two or three years from now, is lack of political will. There is not even extra government money involved. As I stated on the site, the homeless people who are capable of signing up for the Free Worlder app would make very good house guests, based on my experience with my cooling center over the summer, where I had zero behavioral problems presented by the homeless people who visited my cooling center, my peace stickers, and that store, even though a fair number of them admitted to mental illness and drug use. Also, a fair number of the homeless that I spent time with demonstrated high levels of cultural sophistication that you would expect from guests signing up on the international traveler site called CouchRing.com. Thank you. P.S. One additional point, the Catholic Community Services now is a program funded by the state that will pay your rent for a short while if you're truly in need. Finally, it has come to my attention that Occupy Medical not only has been evicted from their indoor space on Eastern Chiefs Avenue, but they have also been denied a permit for being at the park box. That situation has got to be changed immediately. And one final point, I would appreciate if you pass the resolution to expand the NHS rest stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Alice Louise Warner, followed by the Raging Grannies.
So I'm Alice Louise Warner, and I live in Councillor Zelenka's Ward, and I live in the city of Eugene.
Thankfully, you're not following them.
I know. I'm thinking, I just thought that. I thought, yay. That was my lucky day. So I have a few points I want to make about the city's decision to schedule a work session on moving money out of US Bank, and I want to say thank you. I want to urge you to schedule that work session as soon as you can, because the deadline for moving the money is going to come up faster than anyone realizes, and I think there's a bit of detail work to be done in between now and then. But the first point I want to make is that breaking up with US Bank will align the city's financial life with the human rights values and environmental values that you've already expressed. And second, I want to say that beyond that, there's another benefit here, which I'm sure you can see too, but I want to speak to, which is that when you spread the wealth of the city around into smaller banks, you can have a profound effect on the local economy, because the smaller banks are doing small business lending and farm lending. So this is a happy, I hope this is a feel-good project and a happy project. It's not just about leaving the mega-banks, it's about bringing that money back home, and that's consistent with your policy to do business with local contractors, at least contractors in the state of Oregon. Third point I'd like to make is that there's an RFP process coming up, and I hope that you will make that an open process, soliciting the expertise and help of people from 350 and other organizations who've been working on divestment. There are a number of people in the 350 city divestment group who have tremendous expertise. I've spent about six months researching bank divestment for various reasons, and we would like to help. But I think it's very important that you call upon experts, because you're doing something a little bit new. In that light, I'd like to say that I have recently done a survey of local banks in Eugene to talk to them about their divestment status. As a private citizen, I cannot get the information I need to make a banking choice. However, the banks who are motivated to work with you, and there are many, have said that if you put the request in the RFP for the status of their divestment, that they can do that in the context of RFP. So I believe you will be able to get the information you seek, but you'll need to add it to the RFP, and I think that'll take some work, and we all offer to help, and the Eugene 350 city divestment group has a lot of expertise to offer. I think that's all you need to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, the Raging Grannies, followed by Carol Crawford.
Hi, I'm Jean Murphy, and we are the Raging Grannies, and we represent every ward in Eugene. Okay, where's our beat here? I'm a happy granny living in Eugene with a solid rep for being clean and green. So imagine my surprise, imagine my dismay, when I heard the word on the street one day. I heard, "Our town's money's in a real bad place." I said, "Our town's money? It's a real disgrace."
We know you hand it over to US Bank, and they throw it into a dirty oil tank. It funds DAPL and fracking and drilling for oil.
Which damages our planet.
Makes my old blood boil. Oil leaks happen in rural places. I can't stand thinking of the frowning faces of indigenous people without clean water, because we support a bank, we had an order.
Yeah, we make a little money, but at what expense? We gotta think of the future, use common sense. There are clean, green ways to make the money we need, instead of joining forces with oil-stained greed.
Let's make a deal to help our planet heal.
Put our money where it matters, honey.
Keep our cash in a local stash.
Use our moolah to make things coolah.
So, we grannies say it's time to divest. Think of the future and do what's best. Divest from US Bank and do it now. Divest from US Bank and we'll show you how.
And next up is Carol Crawford, followed by David Wade.
Hi, I'm Carol Crawford, also known as Ananda Reeves. Most of my committee work in here in town is under the name of Ananda Reeves. That's my public speaking name, that's my famous name. Mayor Viness knows me as Ananda as well. So I'm here on behalf of all of the Yelders here in our town, and especially right behind me. I don't refer to us as elders anymore, but we are the Yelders' younger elders. And the younger elders need to start thinking about what they're going to do about their housing, because pretty soon, they'll be elders, they'll be the real old ones. And when they get to the real old space, they may not have any choices. So I'm the founder of the Tiny House Tiny Villages meetup group. We've been meeting for over a year, and we've been studying the laws and the codes and all of the things that are in the way of people having small houses in their backyard. I've become very familiar with a group, a whole population in this town that most people don't even know exists. They're called the Yimbees, yes, in my backyard. And they're Yelders mostly, but they want to have people in their backyard for various reasons. Perhaps they want to travel and have someone on their property to watch their animals while they go see their grandkids, or perhaps they're young college students who are there for part of the time. Or maybe people want to have a tiny house in their backyard because they have a relative that needs special help or special love. And so the thing that's between people being out of isolation and having help and sharing their property and getting that done are the laws that has to do with land use and land use distribution. So I want to encourage the city council to take seriously that the easiest way to solve our housing problems is to let people share land, and instead of sprawling out or building big high-rises, people that want to live in small houses is because they want to downsize or they want to live more sustainably. They want a simpler life, maybe they want to, you know, just live smaller and easier. They don't want to be campers, they don't want to be up on wheels, they don't want to be temporary. They're very eager to go ahead and pay their own fair share of taxes, which isn't appropriate to the size of their house. And they want a house on the ground, and they want a garden, and they want a real neighborhood. So I want to encourage you to take a look at what it takes to get the things out of the way so people can live together. Thank you.
Thank you. David Wade, followed by David.
Igle.
Igle. Thank you very much.
My name is David Wade, and I live in Ward One and am represented by Councillor Semple. I'm here representing Tiny House, Tiny House Villages, in support of the Sustainability Commission's Tiny House proposal. We would very much like that you enact the proposal. We're a group of property owners and renters that want to live in smaller housing, and primarily in villages, for a variety of reasons. The top three would be to live more simple, smaller lives, to live together, share land, and have stronger connections with their neighbors, and then also to have a smaller footprint and use less resources. I also want to share, I believe that if you enact the Sustainability Commission's proposal, you'll make your constituents very happy. As you might have seen in the Register Guard this morning, a workshop I helped co-facilitate, Backyard Housing 101, was a big success in the Register Guard. It was reported 80 people attended. We did the count this morning, it was actually 97. And many of the people that attended thanked us for putting on the event. And I would say that largely, the event was a big success because of our excellent speakers like Mayor Viness, who helped kick it off. And also, we had Michael Feifield, Will Dixon, as well as Dan Hill and Keith Snyder as our speakers, all well-known builders and architects in the area. And so from the enthusiasm I saw at the workshop, I'm confident that your constituents would be very supportive of you through the Tiny House proposal, the Sustainability Commission allowing your very talented and dedicated planning staff and planning commissioners work to find ways to make it easier to build smaller housing in Eugene. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. David Igle, followed by Lori Powell.
David Igle, 1313 Lincoln, Ward One. The denaming of Dunn Hall on the University of Oregon campus was based on a now-discredited history report, which completely misrepresents the local chapter KKK, Dunn's character and his relationship to this chapter. I was born and raised in Eugene, I was baptized in St. Mary's Catholic Church and educated local Catholic schools. I am therefore among those who are the alleged victims of Professor Dunn. I can assure you that I and other citizens of this community were not victimized by this good man. I know because I discredited the history report. I've created a 53-page blog entitled RealDunn.blog that explains the actual history of what happened. There are three separate major KKKs in US history. The second KKK, the Fraternal Order, is completely unlike the other two, which were indeed violent white racist organizations. The history of the 1920s KKK was known by few historians, let alone the public. It was created by financially motivated con artists, whose sales reps typically approached the most honorable people in the community, representing their organization as a supporter of prohibition, not white supremacy. Within a few months in Eugene, these leading citizens realized they had been misled and disassociated themselves from the fraternal order as the actual leader of the local chapter. C. Nelson Jones went amongst the lesser lights of the community, claiming that the University of Oregon was comprised almost completely of Catholics and that it was run by secret Jesuit priests. Had the chairman of the Latin Department at the University of Oregon gone about year after year claiming that the U of O was run by secret Jesuit priests, so that he could hustle the not very brights of the community for $10 membership fees, this would have been remarked about, but no one did for 70 years. Professor Dunn's brief and insignificant connection with a lawful fraternal order originated as Methodist religious beliefs leading to the support of prohibition. Dunn and other local Methodists, both past and present, are entitled to practice their religious beliefs without being attacked by the ilk of a Michael Schill. Michael Schill has no roots in this community, and he demonstrates no genuine concern for this community and its heritage. There are endless and largely cost-free activities that the city can and should undertake. For example, public informational displays at the library, naming a room to honor Professor Dunn in a public building, sponsoring debate concerning the actual history of Professor Dunn. How difficult would it be to address a letter to Mr. Schill asking if he wishes to continue to vouch for the accuracy of the Dunn report he sponsored? I don't think he will. Thank you for your attention to this matter. It is important that we challenge. It is important that we challenge ignorance and bigotry. This is especially true when that ignorance and bigotry originates in the office of the president of the University of Oregon. The proper response to liars is to tell the truth. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next up is Lori Powell, followed by Bard Prentice.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Lori Powell. I live in Ward 1. Thank you for your upcoming work session, in which you will consider the proposed divest Eugene ordinance. This shows that our city is in solidarity with the divest globe movement that actually started today. Eugene's consideration of divesting its holdings from US Bank is particularly timely, given all the other city-based activities going on with respect to climate change, particularly the task of updating and responding to the Community Climate Energy Action Plan, or CAAP 2.0, over the next one to two years. Divesting the city's holdings from US Bank should be, we hope, a relatively quick win when compared with the vigorous work ahead with the CAAP updating process. So always go for the low-hanging fruit first, if you can. Speaking of the CAAP, we're looking forward to your November 15th work session on this topic and the finalized plan for updating the document. In the meantime, as you all review the city staff's proposal to update the CAAP, please keep in mind some of the key big-picture themes that we've been bringing to testimony over the last year or two, including the process of ensuring how we will achieve a CRO mandated 7.6 annual reductions in carbon emissions. As community members, we're banking on the CAAP as our roadmap for the important work ahead and appreciate so very much all that the city staff has done, the mayor's ad hoc committee, and you, the city council, for working on this roadmap and making it as clear and as engaging as possible. We've stated before, and will state again, that none of us can relent, keeping in mind the urgency of the climate crisis before us. And concerning this sense of urgency, and on a personal note, it was surreal watching the pennant race last week in Houston between the Astros and the Yankees, and contemplating that just a few weeks prior, a significant portion of that city was underwater from the climate change-amplified Hurricane Harvey. And except for the occasional mention of fundraising efforts for hurricane relief, there was absolutely no indication that anything so supremely devastating had just occurred in that city. So, let's think about it a moment. Perhaps we all need a break sometimes from thinking about climate change, and truly, I cannot wait to see the Dodgers take on and beat the Astros in the World Series starting tomorrow. But despite the need we all have to take mental and emotional breaks from this crisis, we know that the urgency isn't going away and that we need each other, citizens, councilors, city staff, to keep moving forward as best we can. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up is Bard Prentice, followed by Michael Carrigan.
I'm Bard Prentice, and I live in Greg Evans Ward. First, I want to thank you for giving Casey Square its rightful name. I lived in Eugene for five years before I ever heard of Broadway Plaza. I had no idea where it was. As you can see, I'm a member of the Rage and Grannies, and we're passionate about justice for all. Tonight, I wish to speak about Nightingale Health Sanctuary. I urge you to approve it as a safe spot. It has a good record for cleanliness and caring for the time it was on MLK Boulevard. It has been searching for a new home since required to leave there. In its move to the Mission, it lost several residents, but has a chance now to grow and offer its protection and shelter to more people. The neighborhood organization has supported it, and it has support and leadership in the wider community of homeless advocates. I've known Nathan and Stacy since the days of Sleeps and Whoville. They've proved to be wonderful caretakers of the residents and the surrounding environment. Please add quickly to approve it as a safe spot, so that it can offer shelter to more people before winter sets in. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Carrigan, followed by Tracy Jocelyn.
My name is Michael Carrigan. I'm a proud resident of Ward 7. And tonight, I'm representing Community Alliance of Lane County, or CALC, and the Nightingale Health Sanctuary. And Claire, thank you so much for supporting county workers by not wanting to cross the picket line at Harris Hall, and thanks to council and city staff for moving the city council meeting here. I know it means a lot to the workers, my partners, who is one of them, so thank you. However, I'm here tonight to call on you to support establishing a rest stop at 34th and Hilliard. Barb did a great job of explaining it to you. And I understand we probably had the votes in advance, so thank you for that. You're improving the lives of folks who lack safe shelter. Placing a rest stop here is happening because of collaboration between the Nightingale Health Sanctuary, Southeast Neighbors, with their president, David Monk, and city staff, especially Reagan, who is coordinating the comprehensive effort to connect with households and businesses located near the rest stop. Many doors were knocked on. I knocked on some of those doors, and the response was generally a positive one. This is a neighborhood which is saying, "Yes, in my backyard." And I'm proud of that neighborhood. Now, the following ideas I'm going to talk about are courtesy of Heather Selke, who cannot attend tonight's meeting. I just love Heather and the ideas that she comes up with. So she suggests that a recreation department could add a Conestoga Hut building class to their program at every community center located near a ward with a rest stop. The city of, well, the reason we need a Conestoga Hut in every ward, you know, as part of the more comprehensive city emergency shelters system, but it's simply not enough to allow these rest stops to exist. We also must put in place a system that fosters them. And so, her idea about, you know, building the huts, and the city of Eugene could sell the huts, the way they do commemorative bricks to fund the arts, and allow the people buying them to be able to indicate which ward rest stop they want their donation to go to. I really like this one. And the neighborhood association within the wards could host discussions between churches, schools, businesses, and citizens, and build social support that utilizes local resources. So allowing this type of community collaboration investment could help cover the costs and bring us together in supporting the lives and dignity of our most vulnerable neighbors. I want to thank Heather for, you know, coming up with these ideas. She's just a community jewel. And I want to end just changing my, notice I have my 350 hat on tonight, so I want to thank you for scheduling a work session to discuss moving city money out of US Bank. CALC strongly supports moving the city money to be a more socially and responsible bank or credit union. Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy Jocelyn, followed by Susan McCarson.
Hello, my name is Tracy Jocelyn. I'm currently residing in Ward 2, Betty's Ward. Rest stops are a model that have been proven successful. People at NHS rest stops have been able to have shelter and community. They have, have had, and will continue to have a safe place to be and then move on in their lives. Every person has a success story. In 2015, 41 people found housing. In 2016, 39 found housing. A past resident, Michael Greenwald, just passed away last week. When he was a part of camp at Lane County Behavioral Health, he grounded out and spent time with his daughters, whom he loves dearly. NHS enriched his life, and he enriched ours. Every person that has lived at Nightingale Health Sanctuary shared their hearts with each other. Thank you all, and John, Mike, for the opportunity to be a part of enriching people's lives. Thank you to Southeast Neighbors, and thank you to everyone in the community for all of their support. Thanks to Steve and Davis of Good Samaritan for their hospitality. Let's keep working for more shelter options in Eugene and Lane County, including rest stops in every ward. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan, I'm sorry, I can't read his last name.
Mickumson.
Mickumson, thank you. Followed by Jennifer Frenzer-Nolton.
Hi, my name's Susan Mickumson, and I live at 1848 Orchard Avenue. And I'm here tonight, one, to ask you to divest. You all either have kids or grandkids, and it's, you know, the one thing we can do locally that could make a difference. We have a president who doesn't believe in climate change. We have an EPA administrator who is going to sell everything off as fast as he can. And so, we're left with our cities and counties and states to protect our environment. And divesting is probably one of the biggest things that this city could do, because without that money, they can't invest in all these pipelines. And my second reason I'm up here tonight is I've been working on, with a group from CLDC, on the police chief hiring. And again, go back to our current administration, and, you know, the police issues are really scary. And we have a lot of bigotry coming from the top of this nation, and it's coming through our police departments. And it's really important that you keep on this and make sure we have a police chief who doesn't send the message that racism is okay, that sexism is okay, that, you know, this homophobic is, you know, goes after us 350 people when we protest. You need a police chief that is part of this community. This is a great community. You're a great city council. I came from a much more dysfunctional city, and this is an amazing group of people. And I'm really, you know, pleased to be here. But I'm really frightened about, you know, this new police chief. I think, you know, I just, Trump is a scary person. He believes in scary things, and that filters down. And the police are powerful, and they use their power. And I want to make sure there's a police chief that makes sure they use the power the way they're supposed to, not against people of color, people of gender, you know, different genders, and definitely, you know, us environmentalists. So, thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Frenzer-Nolton, followed by Ty Prouse-Zimmerman.
Hello, good evening. I'm Jennifer Frenzer-Nolton, and I'm in Betty Taylor's Ward. And I'm here tonight to talk about the Nightingale Health Sanctuary becoming a rest stop in my neighborhood. I'm only a couple of blocks away on 34th Place, and I've lived there since 2003. So I've been glad to welcome NHS to our quiet corner. And in fact, I'd like to volunteer to the NHS, to the site manager and to the steering committee, my assistance with reaching out to more neighbors, since I know many, and can host meetings or help with further educating the neighborhood. I can vouch for the managers as well. Nathan and Tracy are remarkable people, and they've done remarkable things on behalf of people living on the street. They've met them where they're at, they've lived with them, and they've helped them find housing. There's not many of us who can say that. So they're extraordinary people in our community. I'd like to see their work honored, and I also think that they could also help other folks setting up rest stops, to show them what it takes to properly manage them. So you have a remarkable resource in these two people, and I think that we've only begun to understand how these rest stops could be expanded and how we could get more people interested in hosting them. They've navigated many complicated camp scenarios, complicated meetings, they've shown multiple skills in multiple arenas. They've also been able to help people, very stressed people, at their camp move from site to site, because this site has been, this sanctuary has been forced to move over and over again. And yet, they've done it with grace, and with strength, and character. So I think their track record speaks for itself, whether they were up at Behavioral Health, at the Mission, and now, they have the support of their current hosts at Good Samaritan, who speak very highly of them and are very interested in this rest stop expanding. So I support this in my neighborhood. It's very easy for me to speak on behalf of the site managers and on behalf of the model also. I recommend the city ease the winter stress of having an outdoor camp by facilitating electrical and water hookup for the site. It's appropriate for it. And I welcome the rest stop, and I look forward to exploring with them the valuable roles that they could play as neighbors in my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Ty Prouse-Zimmerman, followed by Eugene Drix.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. My name is Ty Prouse-Zimmerman. I live in Ward 6, Councilor Evans. And this weekend, my cat almost died, and it would have been my fault. He started acting strangely on Wednesday, and my wife wanted to call the vet, and I said, "I'm sure he's fine. Let's wait and see." Got a little bit worse. By Saturday, it was clear something was definitely wrong with him. My wife said, "Let's call the vet." And I said, "He's going to get better. Let's wait and see." Well, he didn't, and Saturday was one of the most, Saturday night was one of the most terrifying nights of my life, as that became more and more clear. Did bring him in Sunday morning. Fortunately, it wasn't too late for an emergency surgery. He's doing okay. He's in recovery at the animal hospital right now. But the vet told me that if we hadn't had him in by about Sunday afternoon, he probably would have died. So, that's because I wanted to wait and see. Sometimes fact-finding is great, but sometimes you just have to take emergency action. So, just generally speaking, if your pet is sick or you think they're sick, trust your intuition, call the vet. And if it's a human family member, call the doctor. And if it's a community member, or a couple thousand of them, come to talk to the city council. Because winter's coming, and that is an emergency that requires immediate action for all of our unsheltered residents here. We can't afford to fact-find, we can't afford to wait and see what happens this winter, because we know what's going to happen to some people if we don't take that action. Nominally, I'm here to talk about Nightingale Health Sanctuary today. Yes, please, vote to make them a permanent rest stop, of course. Nightingale is fantastic. Nathan and Tracy are fantastic. It's a model we need to emulate everywhere we can in this city. We need as many rest stops as possible. But my word of caution is just don't stop there. I know a lot of debate and planning and effort has gone into getting us to where we're ready to take this vote tonight, and I see where that could feel like a bit of a victory and maybe a stopping point. And let's keep in mind that expanding one site's capacity from 6 to 12 isn't a solution for everyone else who still needs shelter as winter approaches. So, just please, keep moving forward as fast as possible. Recognize that we are in fact facing an emergency, and don't leave it to wait and see. Take action. Thank you.
Thank you. Eugene Drix. There he is.
It's harder to get off the bar.
Followed by Joe Tindall.
Do I stand? I guess, I couldn't hear me, or you couldn't hear me. Hi. So different, what happened? All right. My name is Drix, and none of this is what I was going to say. Careful. Oh, it's already my three. No, I don't need that. I'm from Alan's Ward. Alan and I, no, wait, how did I word this? Alan and I are in the same ward, and we enjoy it there. We were throwing bedpans at the nurse the other day, and we laughed. All right. It was funnier when I thought of it. It was funnier when I saw it and he did turn red. So we're on target. Thank you. Thank you very much for inviting me here. Does that sound good while this boots up? I, now this isn't even how I started. I was going to start by saying, "Well, come on in, you bunch of crazies. Let's lighten up and have some fun with all this living together business." Now, do you know where those words came from? Does it kind of tingle? Yes, you've got great nerve. You know. That was Jack Nicholson saying that in Once Over the Cuckoo's Nest, which was written by our boy downtown, that rock solid stone statue of a brilliant man. Also, he's not holding a gun. He's holding a book, which is something that we love in Eugene, too. And yeah, it's just amazing. I don't know if it's a known fact, but he was just a regular guy that grew up here and he was taking a bus trip to New York when President Kennedy was murdered and pulled out. And it just upset him so much and all of him that that's why he begat the bus trip, the famous bus tour that he did. And that was just because of the war, which was because of Kennedy, and things have never been the same since. So he wasn't just a hippie. He was a brilliant person who wrote brilliant commentaries on the life we live. But a lot of people don't know that. And so I just want to remind everybody, now we have it named, Keyes Square, thank you very much. But people still don't know who he is. And I remember I was seeing a couple of, this is the first time I've read on this, Indians down in our mall, people from India. That's correct, isn't it? Yes. All right. But they didn't know who he was, but they were all each taking turns of sitting next to him and having his picture taken. So it kind of came through my mind that he was like the first hippie. So when you all have people going through our mall and you see the statue of Ken, who is that? That's the first hippie. Then just shut up. And if they ask a follow-up question, then you can get into his writing and how his words touched our lives. But he was our favorite son and the guy that stared. All right, good. Now in 30 seconds, I'll explain all the meth in my neighborhood, how I had an intruder last week, but I overcame him by confusing him and I just loved it. Yeah, there's nothing like pressure. Yeah, I just looked up from my bed and there was a guy kind of standing there and I just went, "Okay, I didn't lock the door, did I?" Don't panic, Drix, just keep rolling. So all I said was, "You're late." And he went, "What?" And so I kind of let him out, then he started acting drunk and stuff. But that's the worst crime in my neighborhood, the West University neighbors, is they just kind of grab and go. So use your wit to save your chip. Sorry, I didn't say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Joe Tindall. Followed by Zach Mulholland.
Okay, folks. Yeah, my name's Joe Tindall. Have you guys read this? Okay. So Antifa, a large part of, quote, "social justice," unquote, is out there masked and beating on anyone they disagree with and therefore labeled as a Nazi. They solidly feel the ends justify the means. Homeland Security and the FBI have designated Antifa as domestic terrorists, yet the weekly article reads like a recruiting brochure. Yeah, Chief Kearns bailed out before the political violence brown goose plattered across the rotating air circulation device. I have repeatedly notified you that the police commission has failed to study Pete Kearns' top two concerns, homelessness and political violence. The homeless are not going away. Antifa, read "social justice," is expanding its operations in Eugene. Social justice is a toxic mix of postmodernism, Marxism, militant feminism, and intersectionality. Intersectionality, read "identity victim politics," embraces groups they consider oppressed. It creates the progressive stack where groups are issued victim points according to gender, race, sexual identity, except for gays, who in growing numbers are telling lesbians they are sick of women controlling them. Immigration status, religion fat, as in body positivity, and so on. People with more oppression points are good. People at the bottom of the progressive stack, specifically whites and males, are toxic oppressive scum. As the woman in the subway shop a month ago screamed at me, quote, "We are coming to kill you," unquote, I also witnessed one of two recent social justice public tantrums pulled by one of the organizers featured in the weekly Antifa article. What social justice labels as racism is increasingly white people no longer willing to be ashamed of being white. What they label as sexism is increasingly males no longer ashamed of being men. These two things elected Trump. Pretty much everything you see around you is the gift passed on to their children by a dozen generations of mostly white men in the United States. I will reject every attempt, every attempt to make me feel bad about being what, about what might, about what white males have accomplished. White males ended chattel slavery, which is still practiced in some Islamic countries in Asian Africa. It was white males who cleaned the books of laws discriminating against blacks and women as my parents hit middle age in the 1960s. We are blessed to live in the safest, freest, most prosperous, and most egalitarian country in history. I will, I will debate these concerns equal time, zero interruption with any social justice adherent. Do not allow social justice to destroy free speech. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Zach Mulholland, followed by Geronimo Garcia.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for having me here tonight. My name's Zach Mulholland, a member of, live in Ward One. I am an at-large member of the Sustainability Commission, though tonight I speak on my own behalf. A few things that I want to touch on. First and foremost, I would like to talk about the process to update the Climate Energy Action Plan and the proposal that appears to be moving forward to do outreach to update that plan. A couple key points, I guess I have a concern that this process won't be kind of a broad community conversation about what rules and regulations we should put in place to move forward together. The process has been described as a process of strategic doing where we engage large stakeholders to take appropriate actions to move us in the right direction. I have concerns that some of those stakeholders might not want to move as quickly as we want them to. And that we might not end up with a plan that is as strong as we want to get us to the goals that we need to. So I do want to cut, kind of overarching point is to make sure that the process does include a consideration of new rules and regulations to help us move to, us to where we want to go and is not totally reliant upon actions that people take on their own without being, without rules in place to get them to do so. I think two main points that pick up on some that the councilors mentioned at the last meeting. Councilors Alenka mentioned the idea that we want to make sure that there's a place for the general public to have input on what ideas are considered to be included in that plan. That I want to make sure that that's included early, at an early stage and that that's included in the outreach, that there's, the community has asked what should be included in this plan. And it's not just, hey, this is what we've done and will you please rubber stamp that? A second point, I want to make sure that we include actions to get us to the goals that we've described. And so right now, the process says, "Let's look at what we're doing now. Let's do a gap analysis between what's there and what we want to see. Then let's do the stakeholder process." I think we need to make sure that at the end, there's another gap analysis to say, is what we're proposing going to get us to where we want to go? That gets put to you for a final approval as the council. And, you know, when we put these plans into place, we want to make sure we have rules to, you know, if someone said they're going to promise to do something, we want to be able to hold them accountable to those promises. We also want to make sure that if that's not far enough to get us to where we need to go, that we can put additional rules and into place. I think just on another point, I've just been watching what's been going on with the shutdown of recycling being sold to China. Things are really critical issue. I hope the city's looking at it proactively and this may, while banned in the short term, it might give us an opportunity to re-envision our system and take some proactive actions that others have taken with regards to plastic products. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Geronimo Garcia.
I wanted to do something different on my three and a half minutes. I just wanted to yell and just say, "I hate being homeless here in Eugene. I've been homeless for the whole summer, living in the street. It's not nice. I have so many other opportunities to come from the homelessness and build homes for homeless people. But yet I'm still in the street, day after day, waiting, waiting, waiting for the opportunity and it hasn't come. And I don't know when it will come. And I'm thinking about the guy who talks about the bond measure, which is like $53 million, but there's only $1 million for homeless, for bicyclists. I'm a bicyclist and I live in the street. But right now, I live in a truck, in a trailer, and I can't take my bicycle trailer down because I don't have a place to go. So I cannot build my bicycle trailer system, which will be the homeless solution for Eugene and everywhere, Oregon and, God tell you, I was born in South California. But anyway, I've been up and down the coast and I've been homeless. So I've got a system of building bicycle trailer homes. So you do not need a truck or a car to pull them around. You can build them and put them on a trailer and set them down somewhere. And I am so upset. I just want to yell. I want to just put this in a situation where I'm yelling. I'm sick and tired of being homeless. I've been living on the street and it's dangerous. There's people, you're competing against people who are trying to pick up bottles and cans. And, and you're trying to like park. And I've got four ducks and a chicken and we're just trying to live somewhere. We don't want anyone to bother us. But I'm telling you right now, this bond measure is bad. If you vote for the bond measure, you're voting for $53 million. And the bicyclists are only getting a million dollars, but there could be a million dollars for a bicyclist to live in a functional place. A great place.
Thank you. And that is our final word in the public forum. So I want to close that public forum and offer councilors an opportunity if anyone needs, wants to comment on any, anything that's been shared today? I will, I actually want to, I have asterisk a couple of comments and the first thing is I wanted to comment on, who was it who said, "Don't stop here"? The vote on Nightingale Health Sanctuary. And I say, "There is no intention of the city to stop here. We're not going to rest on our laurels after this vote and say, 'We have done the work.' We know we have plenty of work to do and this is an important step, but it's by no means the final step. So I just want to reassure you, there's lots of work continuing on answering our need for housing in the community." I guess it was Ty who said that. I don't know. And I also just wanted, I appreciate Zach Mulholland weighing in on the C app. I mean, we're, you know, we have the structure for this process and, and that's, we're building on that. So that's our framework for moving forward. There's going to be ample opportunity for community engagement and involvement in that as we, as we move forward. So that also is not a done deal. It's the, it's the first sort of important framework for moving forward on how we meet our climate goals. Any other comments from anyone? Okay, I think that, that ends the public forum session of our meeting. And I am now going to close the council meeting and open a public hearing. Right? No? Don't do that. What do I do?
Close the council meeting.
Don't close, just close, just, okay, forget that. I'm not closing the council meeting, but I'm opening a public hearing. Just skip that one gabble, pound. Okay.
This is a public hearing and possible action on an ordinance amending Section 5.005 of the Eugene Code. The ordinance re-adopts the state traffic code in order to incorporate the changes made during the 2017 legislative session. Typically, you consider and adopt traffic code updates together with necessary changes to the city's offenses. Some of the state traffic code changes went into effect on October 1st. This item was scheduled for a public hearing and possible action at a single meeting and provides for an immediate effective date.
Okay, so do we have anyone signed up for a, we have no one signed up for a public hearing. You can close. So now I get to close the public hearing. I closed the public hearing. Any questions or comments from council? All right. Does any councilor object to taking action on this tonight? No? All right. President?
I move to adopt Council Bill 5179, an ordinance concerning state traffic laws amending Section 5.005 of the Eugene Code, 1971, and providing an effective date.
Ah, Mike is there. What do you know? I'm going to pull that up. Oh, good. Okay, I'm just cranking up the volume for you. Thank you, Mike. All, any further discussion? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Mike? Counselor Clark?
Aye.
Eight, eight in favor? Thank you. None opposed? So that passes. Thank you. Okay. Next up, a motion on the rest stop? Do we need any staff introduction on this?
If you want them, we can provide one.
Do we need any further conversation on the rest stop? Council?
I want to have staff introducing for public watching.
Yeah, right. There we go. Yes, let's do that.
So two weeks ago, staff brought you a proposal from Southeast Neighbors to convert the current car camping site at 34th and Hilliard to a rest stop, which would allow for, at their recommendation, up to 12 people to utilize the rest stop program. And two weeks ago, you did direct us to do some additional outreach and bring back for you a motion tonight to consider making that a rest stop. And Reagan can speak to the outreach conducted over the last couple of weeks.
So staff worked to implement that directive to do some additional outreach. There were ads posted in the Register-Guard on their Sunday, October 15th edition, and the Eugene Weekly that came out Thursday, October 19th. The city advertised the proposal and opportunities to comment via social media on its Facebook page and also by including the video on that, on those posts. And also conducted door-to-door outreach in the immediate neighborhood to over 60 neighboring residents and businesses with staff and volunteers conducting the outreach.
Is there any questions? We can answer those. Any, any councilors with questions, comments?
I just wanted to thank staff for doing an extra outreach. I think it was worth postponing this a little bit and doing that, especially going door-to-door. Can you talk to the volunteers that helped?
Yes, we had volunteers from Nightingale Health Sanctuary Steering Committee and some community supporters that helped that effort. So over two and a half days, different times of the day to try to catch people, splitting out in pairs, leaving flyers at all residents, including those that, you know, no one was home, so that they knew about the program, knew about the proposal, and knew about ways to provide comment.
How many houses did you hit and how many did you talk to?
Well, over 60, and I'd probably say well over 60. That was kind of a eyeballing the math that we used. How many we talked to? I'd have to kind of stab at that and maybe half the people were there, I'd say. Yeah. And the businesses as well, along East Amazon and west, I guess that's Hilliard, Down Hilliard. We talked to all of those businesses as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just add that actually I went canvassing yesterday for this and found people very supportive of it. So I think the feedback was good overall. All right. Now, we ready for a motion?
I move to approve the rest stop site in the city-owned parking lot on the southwest corner of 34th Avenue and Hilliard Street. and Hilliard Street in Eugene.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Mike? Counselor Clark?
Aye.
Eight in favor and none opposed. That's great. Yes. So, yeah, so the next order of business, if we could talk about the dusk-to-dawn.
Sure. So in 2015, council passed an ordinance that we refer to as the dusk-to-dawn ordinance, which permits overnight sleeping in areas that are approved by address, by council. And that allows folks to arrive in the evening, and then they're asked to leave in the morning. And we normally try to connect them to services. Tonight, we're asking you to take action to move a current site to a location across the street. The current site is operated by St. Vincent de Paul. They have purchased the property across the street from their service station on Highway 99. And they have asked that they be able to move the dusk-to-dawn operation to that site that will allow them to increase capacity from 60 folks to 80 folks per night. As an aside, last year, they had a waiting list of roughly 115 people at any given time. So this would allow them to provide services to more. Folks staying at their dusk-to-dawn site will still be able to access the services at the service station during the day. So laundry, storage, computers, things like that.
Okay, any questions, comments? Counselor Zelenka?
Did we talk to...
Can I get in the queue, please, Mayor?
Yes.
Did we talk to the neighbors of this new site?
We haven't... When the original site was designated, we spoke to neighbors in the area. This is... We'd speak to the same neighbors if we were to tell them about the move. We haven't not done that. St. Vincent de Paul, we'd have to ask if they've done outreach. I know they've been talking with the businesses in the area, so it very well could be that they've talked to other neighbors, too.
Is there anybody from St. Vincent de Paul here that can answer that question?
No, we don't have anyone here from St. Vincent tonight.
Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. It's my opinion that if anyone can handle an operation of this nature, it would be St. Vincent de Paul. And I have heard nothing but good things about what they do so far. But I do recall that in our original discussions around dusk-to-dawn, police chief and others mentioned some issues that tend to arise around large numbers of people camping together. And so as we increase the size of this, questions arise for me about upper limits and where a reasonable number is in a situation like this. And I'm wondering if staff can address that question?
Well, dusk-to-dawn sites are different than rest stops in that they require paid security guards to be on-site all evening. So as far as we know, we haven't heard of any issues that have arisen over the last two seasons in which this has been operating. So the security guards seem to be working. We can certainly... You know, the city manager has the discretion to work on the agreement, and we could certainly look into increased security for the increased number of folks that will be using the service. Additionally, this is... We're not talking about one large tent. We're talking about multiple tents, MASH-style tents, that allow people to sleep. Probably, I think it's 40 per, or 30 per. They're large, but not all 80 people are sleeping in the same area.
I think for future conversations, it would be interesting to me to have some kind of conversation around the decision-making standards with something like this and how and why we might make decisions around numbers in terms of what's reasonable, sort of, you know, limits on things.
Okay. I have Counselor Cyret and then Counselor Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. So I hope my fellow councilors will approve this motion this evening. As Counselor Clark pointed out, St. Vincent de Paul is very well positioned to continue running this program, even with the additional 20 people. They've been very successful. They want to be successful in running this program. And the site is across Highway 99 on a property that used to be, I think, many years ago, a mobile home park. And it will actually kind of be tucked a little bit more away in terms of how the site is laid out than the Lynnholm Center parking lot. So in terms of perception from the street, you might not even know that there was, you know, 80 people taking shelter on this site. So I think it's a good use of a vacant site right now. It allows St. Vincent de Paul to reclaim their parking lot, which they probably could use also during the day. And it will allow for 20 more individuals to be sheltered safely overnight. And as we just heard from staff, they averaged a waiting list of 119, I think you said. So we're still not reaching capacity for folks who tried to knock on that door. But we're improving it by allowing St. Vincent de Paul to take advantage of this new piece of property that they've purchased, which they hope to eventually turn into a more permanent housing. I think maybe turn it back into a mobile home park that they would own and manage.
Okay, Counselor Evans?
Yeah, I was going to... I think Counselor Cyret said most of what I was going to say. I think that the future of this site for St. Vincent is to put more permanent housing on there. So the whole MASH tent piece is a temporary solution for this particular season, I believe, only. And I believe that the next step in this is they have acquired that piece of property or the process of acquiring that piece of property so that they can construct, you know, more permanent housing on that site. So contextually, this is a transitional kind of situation for St. Vincent de Paul and providing, you know, affordable housing in the area. And we don't want to increase the burden on Ward 7 in terms of the, you know, amount of temporary transitional kinds of, you know, locations here. But I think that this is moving to a more permanent solution. And I'm extremely supportive of it.
Counselor Semple?
Thank you. I think this is a good idea. I'm almost disappointed to hear that it could go to permanent housing because I think the dusk-to-dawn is so critical. So I kind of hope we could find another place for a dusk-to-dawn. I like it that it's across the street. The neighbors haven't been upset so far, so... And this is going to be farther back. You won't be able to see it. It will be more private. I also think that it could address a concern that I heard from some people last year, that the big tent was not separated, one end to the other, for genders. And some of the women did not feel safe in that situation. So I'm hoping that with the bigger capacity and multiple tents, there could be more separation for a greater feeling of safety among the overnighters. I appreciate St. Vincent's for doing this. We've got 3,000 homeless people, and another 20 is another 20. I wish we had more dusk-to-dawns and more car camping, so let's keep working. Thank you.
Counselor Pryor?
Yeah, I actually appreciate this proposal by St. Vincent de Paul. I think it will actually be something that creates greater order in the winter strategy that they're pursuing. Where they are right now is not the best location for what they're trying to do. But across the street gives them more space to create a much more, I think, efficient and well-managed structure. They're pursuing winter strategies the way you would pursue emergency shelter. And I remember early on when the Eagan Warming Center was first getting started, there was conversation about should we pack everybody into one location or divide them up? And very quickly, they realized dividing people up is the best way to manage. So Counselor Clark's comments are actually right on target in terms of how big should any one individual unit be. St. Vincent has enough experience with this to recognize they don't want to erect one tent with 80 people in it. They know that would not be an ideal solution. But this site affords them the space to be able to build more than one tent that can accommodate emergency shelter-sized groups. So that's why, to me, this is a more efficient way to get to the numbers you want to get without creating the kinds of problems that you would normally encounter with large groups of people. So I think this is actually wiser for creating an emergency shelter-type model that will work more effectively for the winter.
All right. Counselor Zelenka?
How many of the housing overnight in the existing site?
Sixty.
Sixty? So this is really just an increase of maybe up to 20?
And as a reminder, it operates November to March.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, so this is a timely vote.
Move to authorize an overnight sleeping site permitted under the dusk-to-dawn ordinance at 605 and 717 Highway 99.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Counselor Clark?
Aye.
Eight in favor, none opposed. Thank you very much. That's great to hear of that. Okay. Now, I do adjourn the meeting of the City Council of the Urban Eugene Urban Renewal Agency.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is for the agency board to make appointments to the Riverfront Renewal Guides, which will advise the agency director and board on the activities of the Riverfront Urban Renewal District. In July, the agency board gave staff direction to conduct a broad search for applicants and have the mayor recommend seven individuals for board consideration. The application window was open for two months, and we received 53 applicants. The agency board is looking for members to represent the richness of the community's perspectives, neighborhoods, and population demographics. People who live and work in the riverfront district or have an interest or expertise in development, finance, architecture, ecology, sustainability, and river conservation were encouraged to apply. Tonight, you are asked to consider the mayor's recommendations and make appointments to the River Guides. And the city manager supports these appointments.
So any discussion? Anyone need to be in the queue to discuss this? Ask questions? Counselor Semple?
Are we making the motion first?
We can. We can.
Either way, you can make the motion first.
I'm interested in Gregory Ringer as a replacement for John. And I'm sorry, I don't know how to say his last name. Iglesias. So I'm going to make that motion after the first motion is made. I think that Gregory Ringer has just an incredible amount of valuable experience, both in developing places around the world. He's got a lot of interest in sustainability and parks and tourism. And I think we'd be remiss to let go of that expertise in this job. And John Igley...
Iglesias.
Iglesias. I don't know that much about him. He wrote almost nothing on the application, which to me says he's not really very interested. He's a landowner there, which sure means he's interested, but it could be self-interest since he owns the land. So I'm going to move to make that substitution. Nothing against anybody. I just think this is an opportunity that we should grab.
And the other second? That's the motion now?
No.
To make the vision first.
Oh, Mayor, maybe you could explain the process that you went through to narrow down the 53 people down to the seven and why you chose them and maybe specifically each one of them, including John Iglesias?
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. So I did this iteratively, in a way. I read through all of them, keeping in mind that we needed a variety of expertise. Went through the list a couple of times. The staff did this wonderful thing of creating flashcards for me, so that was very helpful. I could sort of put them all out on the table. I was trying to get a mix of experience, a mix of expertise. I was trying to get an age mix, a gender mix, ethnicity mix. I wanted people who... To have some people who had a deep experience in the community and provide an opportunity for some new people to come along and become engaged and for the next generation to become engaged. So, you know, Julie Daniel comes with environmental credentials, deep involvement in the community, deep familiarity with the community, involved in, you know, a wide array of things. Nigel Francisco, I felt we needed someone. Chamber board members seemed appropriate. Businessman in the community seems to bring a lot to the table. Harris Hoffman, deep experience with exactly this kind of development, very much wanting to do this locally, kind of really understands and very deeply involved with a lot of organizations. Johnny Iglesias I included because he is the president of the Northwest Community Credit Union. He doesn't actually own that property, but he's the president of that organization. And he was, you know, led the way. He was in the vanguard in terms of building a development out on the riverfront. And we've made a commitment to him as a businessman that we would develop it. So he felt like someone who really needed to be at the table because he'd already kind of walked the talk of developing there. Victoria Nguyen, she had been on the foundation team. She was someone I thought, younger, female, new insights, hadn't been involved quite at this level, but knew was part of the UO Foundation proposal. So really understands this riverfront and comes with some communication expertise. I thought she would be a new, good person to bring involved. Matt Roberts, because he's the University of Oregon. I think we really... That's a critical partner in everything that's going on in the riverfront. I felt it was important that someone from the UO be there. And Kate Trump Van Holst, she's a landscape architect. She's young, she's new. She brings an environmental perspective and a landscape perspective. And I thought she'd be another new community leader to bring on board. So that was my reasoning, to try and create a little variety in the group. Any other comments? Counselor Pryor?
Yeah, I know John Iglesias. He serves on 15th Night with me. He's also served on some housing committees with me. So I think his interest is less self than it is wanting to get involved in the community. He's told me flat out he wants to get more involved in the community and do more things to benefit the community. So I see his role as actually being one of wanting to see the best development there. So I'm just giving him my personal endorsement. I know him, and I think he's probably somebody who's there because he wants to make that a successful development.
Any other councilors?
May I be in the queue, Mayor?
Ah, you're on right now, in fact.
Thank you, Mayor. I, as well, would probably support Mr. Iglesias staying on. I was, however, surprised not to see anyone from Neighborhood Association on there. And seeing that John Borowski had applied and with his deep knowledge of planning and with that area as well, I was kind of surprised not to see him on there. And I would support him if anyone else felt a motion was in order to put him on there.
All right. I, you know, I'll just say one thing about these 53 applications, which is that I could have come up certainly with seven different committees of seven, and they all would have been excellent. They were all excellent candidates. So there are lots of people here we could go through So there are lots of people here we could go through, we could come up with another seven, and we would still have excellent River Guides. So, I did the best I could and, and recognized that everybody who applied was qualified, committed, came with unique and valuable perspectives and experience, and we just only have room for seven. So, all right. Counselor Semple?
The wards are not very equally distributed at all. The other divisions, you got right on, but Ward 8 has three, Ward 3 has two, Ward 7 has one, and a wordless person has one. So, at least five wards just out of it. I had something else I was going to say, but it, went away.
Okay. Yes. Counselor Cyret?
Well, I appreciate the mayor's explanation of your thinking and how you looked at this, and I believe you when you say you could have appointed seven people to seven committees and had great, you know, great participants in those committees. I did notice the ward distribution. I think it's very challenging, given all the mix of things that you were looking for to, to keep the wards in mind as well. So, you know, if Counselor Semple makes her motion and gets a second, I may vote for that one exchange, simply because Mr. Ringer's application came through when we were doing boards and commissions. And I also voted to appoint him to at least one of our boards and commissions, because I was very impressed with his breadth of knowledge. So I, I wouldn't be opposed to taking the opportunity to see if we could get him appointed here. But that's, at this point, the only substitution that I would be willing to consider.
Counselor Yeh?
Yeah, so, thank you, Mayor, for the hard work. I, I'm not sure I would want to have gone through all of them. There were excellent applications from everyone. And even though there's no one from Ward 4 appointed, I actually think that having John on the, in the group would be beneficial. I think, you know, we're developing this area and having someone who's already been willing to, I mean, not his own money, but he's, you know, his company has already committed to the area. I think that could be very valuable. So, I, I would rather see him stay.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. Motion on the table?
I move to appoint those nominated by the mayor.
Aye.
All right. Counselor Semple?
I move to substitute Gregory Ringer for John Iglesias.
Second. Okay. Discussion on the, motion on the table on Gregory Ringer. All ready to vote? All in favor of the substitute? One, two, three. Opposed? One, two, three, four. Counselor Clark?
I'm a no vote.
Five. Right? Did I count that right? Yes. Okay, so that goes down. So we're back to the original motion. All in favor of the original motion? One, two, three, four, five. Counselor Clark?
Aye.
Six. All opposed? One, two. It passes. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay. I think that closes our meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency. And I've already closed the City Council, so we're done, right? Okay.